Bill set? Good. I'd like to call the meeting order for May 31st, 2023. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start out, Tom couldn't be with us tonight for personal reasons. Okay. I want bills. You're all signed up?
All signed, yep.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Minutes of the last meeting, we're gonna hold off till next week.
Okay, we'll table those.
They're ready, they just, I just didn't send them to you.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay, Town Administrator, weekly update.
All right, just a couple of items that we wanna tell you about tonight. First is, the Three Rivers Land Trust is having their Goat Hill Trail grand opening Saturday, June 3rd, 2 o'clock. They put a personal invitation out to the Board of Selectmen, myself and obviously all of the residents, but it is a grand opening Saturday at 2:00.
I see Mark up there working.
Yeah.
Recording work up there.
Yeah. Yeah, they've got, it's all ADA compliance and everything, it's a nice flyer, so.
Nice.
So regarding town meeting coming up, per the board's instruction, we do have signs that have been ordered. It'll say "Town Meeting This Saturday," so Robin will be putting them out as soon as that first Saturday passes, so that it is an accurate sign. We are doing a mailing to all of the voters, the households that are registered in town. That should hit by Tuesday of the town meeting week. It's just a basic flyer, emailed it to you guys. We have secure babysitting. Compliments of Bridget Whitman, licensed daycare provider, the PTG wasn't able to assist. So she's gonna be doing that, which we'll be making a donation to. Mary Grant is going to be doing light refreshments, so they'll be there handling that. There'll be a 50/50. So we've done every push that you guys mentioned to kinda try to get people out. So that's scheduled. I wanna take a minute to thank Bernard Broder, as much as he doesn't want me to. He planted all the flowers and shrubs out front for us. It's something that Michelle used to do, and we just don't have the manpower right now with Kayla's last day being Friday and two new girls in, it just hasn't been priority, and people often mention it. So Bernard did a phenomenal job, and we are thankful for that.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it Bernard, looks very nice. Yes, yes. Good luck with that, let me know how that goes. And then on a more of a sad note, if you haven't heard by now, Claire Bragg has passed away. Her daughter Doris has been communicating with me and has asked for our assistance in a luncheon, which we are gonna help them put together on Monday, May 12th. As I understand it, a full obituary in the services and maybe even William could add some detail to it. But I know our piece of it will be to set up a luncheon here, so we'll be looking for some donations and some goodies. But as far as the services and stuff, I think that'll be announced soon. I think it's, I think the services are actually in Berwick, if I recall, and then they'll come here afterward. So everybody will be invited for a fellowship, if you would like to donate something little.
I was gonna say, what kind of goodies, like sweets?
Um, I think she was thinking, you know, just finger sandwiches. I mean, it's just gonna be a light, you know, 1:00 to maybe 3:00. We do have an election next day, so we'll, I've already recruited some helpers to do all the serving and help set up for the next day, but we'd appreciate food donation.
I can help with that. Thank you. Make something up.
Sure, good life and, yes, very much.
I had the privilege of picking her up last, I think it was Christmas.
Oh, Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving, when we did our neighbors helping neighbors Thanksgiving, she came.
And she, unfortunately, she'd already scheduled me in for next year, but unfortunately. Yeah, and of course we used to go up there and get jams off, but when she stopped doing them, but she made an awesome strawberry rhubarb.
Yeah.
Loved it, and she will be missed.
Yep, absolutely, so. Mark your calendars, and if you wanna bring something, please let me know, but mark condolences as well to you and the rest of the family. That's all I have, sir chairman.
Okay, Department Heads, Community Chair Updates.
How you doing? It's not really an update, it's just our public awareness. We do not appreciate that wood ash be put in the leaf pile. I've caught it twice now, and since the snow has gone, the snow was here, they were doing it then, but I just wanna make sure whoever's doing it.
So they're dumping their burn pile ash?
Right. In the leaf pile, correct.
That's not a good idea.
No, and I think that's probably the reason why it burnt last year, but just public needs to know, we don't. I'm gonna put a metal barrel out there with a cover, so if they have wood ashes, it'll go in that barrel.
You're gonna put a sign up to make sure?
I will put a sign up, cop, so.
Good.
Yep, just a public announcement.
Awesome. Thanks, Robin. Anybody else? Mr. Corey?
I feel on the agenda, if it's something.
Am I on the agenda?
Yeah, your new business.
Okay, I didn't even see.
I mean, that's all right, I thought they made their way back. Abby, you're here, whatever you wanna.
Why don't we just take care of it now?
Okay.
It's a Department Head issue.
Yeah, that's why I thought it'd be okay in this venue. There was some controversy and some discussion on What's Up in Acton relating to the Candidates Night video, and I just want to state on public record that it had, it was simply human error. Videographer realized that they didn't hit the record button within an hour of the meeting. Then they rectified it and started recording the meeting, so they feel terrible about the situation. They know it was an important event, and everybody was, the statements that were being said and What's Up in Acton just need to be clarified that it was just a human error and it had nothing to do politically or there were no other motives involved.
Board of Selectmen didn't contact you, haven't contacted you, told to cut it.
No.
The Town Administrator who now oversees you, doesn't have anything to do with it, was it a coincidence that all of a sudden that happened?
No.
And even though everybody saw her there, it was a human mistake? Can you talk a little bit about the whole three day that you have to upload? And that was something you requested, the three days. Can you tell them what the process kinda looks like, so again, we don't tie that to, you know, the board holding you back? Three days to get videos online, why you came up with the three days?
It's a safe number, a safe amount of time to get the video produced, edited. With the chance of, you know, technical issues and glitches. But I put them up as soon as I can, as fast as I can. Usually it's a 24-hour turnaround time in most meetings and events. There was an issue last year, the video was not put up in a timely manner. I know that was a concern.
Was that anything on the board's side?
No, and again, nothing. It was, again, just human error, not, you know, dotting your i's and, you know, crossing your t's.
Do you think that, you know, when something like this happens, because people do make mistakes? And that's, you know, we all understand that, but do you think that we, our Town Administrator, somebody should be notified?
Yeah, we talked about that.
So that we could, well, I'm just saying, you know, so we could put, you know, let people know.
Get ahead of it.
For a heads up, yes. I understand what you're saying, and absolutely.
You know, I know we all get busy.
When these issues do occur, I tend to let Jennifer know of events that maybe backlog or slow at getting up because I have other responsibilities.
I know.
But we'll definitely make sure the communication is there if there is another tie-up like that.
And we know things happen. Over the years, you know, when there's town meetings, public hearings, Candidates Nights, is it fair to say that we've pushed pretty hard to make sure those got up as fast as we could? We've called and made sure that has happened?
Yeah, especially the big events, the big Warner Finance meetings that we have at town level. I definitely tried, like I said, I try to get the turnaround time 24 hours, but.
I mean, the other day when I saw those threads, you know, and I don't respond to them because it's probably not good that I do.
I don't wanna get into the weeds of it either.
No, no, but the conspiracy theory stuff that, you know, we had something to do with that, you know, it was, it's conspiracy theory stuff, and it was actually, it's unfortunate for the individual that was taping it, made that.
I know, made her feel horrible.
It turned into a big deal, and I'm sure she feels bad about it, but the first thing that certain people do is they go negative.
But it's not even negative on the staff, it's negative that the Select Board must have done it. The Town Administrator, who he now answers to, and now all of a sudden we need a cable committee because the Town Administrator can't handle the APAT Director. You know what I mean, you read it, I mean, it's just, it's frustrating to read it. And, you know, I want you to know that, I mean, I personally appreciate you coming out here and acknowledging that. And Virginia, I mean, she's as lovely as they come, and she took full responsibility, as we all do when we make mistakes, and we all make them. And I appreciated the kind comments that were directed towards her. We wouldn't even be having this conversation if they didn't just assume in the first place that it was something internal, like we had you do that, we intentionally had you cut that.
Mm-hmm, and it's not the first time they've kind of.
I know, yep.
I was at that meeting, there wasn't anything in that meeting I thought that was worth cutting out.
But you didn't, right, you wouldn't do that anyways.
No, and we don't do that. We don't do that, cuz honestly.
Unless there's a swear or, you know.
If we were cutting out videos, there'd be a lot less me on there, okay? So, and I think that, so we don't edit, we let you guys do your job. I think some of the comments, it should be independent, it is, it absolutely is. I mean, that's his own department, we let him run his department.
We don't, we don't give it too much.
Now and then we'll call up and say, hey, you know, we got some people, they really wanna see this real bad, can you get it up quicker? It's all we do. And, but you guys are doing your job, it was an accident, and I appreciate you coming up tonight.
Mm-hmm, I'm just wanting to set the record clear.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Okay, where are we now? We're still at Department Heads, Community Chair Updates. Do we have any more Department Heads? No? Okay, we're gonna go down to the liaison updates. Tom is not with us tonight. I do not have any updates.
I don't either, right now.
Okay, so we're gonna go down through old business, road survey.
All right, so Mr. Langley has gone on his third week. We have done due diligence, we cannot get a response from the other surveyors, so we are just hoping for a motion tonight to sign this Hawk Road. And as I understand it, this will be in next year's budget?
Yeah, this will be, yeah.
Okay.
So you're fine with the amount?
Yeah, I mean.
It's coming out of your budget?
Yeah, like I said, I.
Fine without the bids.
Yeah, no, I was, like I said, I got, I played phone tag with another guy the other day, and it just didn't happen, so.
Yep, so.
Do you have the original?
Yeah, I'll look at that.
You wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Sebagot Techno, tech, yeah, I can't even talk, Technics, for $8,000.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I'll get you a copy from this table.
Thank you.
Do we need to sign this?
Yes, please.
Okay, there we go, so where are we?
What's today's date?
31st.
31st. Okay, we'll go down to B, new website.
So I've asked Dan Crumpets to be here tonight. We are getting close to a launch, and thanks to his hard work, so I thought it'd be a good time for an update. And I did show them, oh, look at you, don't even have a week.
You can turn around, we're gonna do a little mini show and tell.
Need to hit the light, Michael?
Cameras aren't looking at my head.
All right, so the new website is coming along nicely. Between our vendor and myself, we've done a lot of work on it, so this is what we see here, the new website. If we click on the Select Board here, it should bring us to the Board of Selectmen page. This is the blurb that was on the existing page. If this was updated, we could click on Current Agenda and see the current agenda, so this is just basic information I pulled from the previous page. Go back, and now we can see our pending items as well, just by clicking these links. As we scroll through the homepage, you can see at the very top, this Town Meeting, June 10th, in red. That's kinda to draw your attention. And we also have the capability to click on a button here to see something. So just for giggles, I have that linked to the warrant from last year's meeting, so we can see that information.
Now, will that be scrolling, did we talk about that?
We talked about it, I don't believe we can make it scroll.
Okay. Blink, anything? No, just kidding. Oh, it's a nice bike.
I lost my place. That's what happens when I don't wear my glasses. So we're still working on building all the pages, so here we click on Departments and Committees. We can see some of the Departments and Committees I have done, the ones that are not bold here are ones I haven't played with yet. These are just placeholders, I assume all of the Departments and Committees are gonna be on this page, probably alphabetized unless the board and Jennifer want something to stand out up top, like the Town Clerk for Information, things like that. Again, we can click on one of these links to go to that page, and here's the Town Clerk's page, and then we can scroll through here. Back to home, so I showed you some of these menus. What I'm really excited about is this calendar. So here's our calendar for the month of May. If I go into June, you can see I've already populated all of the June events as well. But one of the things I really like, especially for our community members, you can come in here and click on a meeting and say, "Read More." And here is a link to the YouTube recording. And that brings you right there, opens it up, starts playing. So the intent is that after every meeting, as soon as APAT gets it posted on YouTube, I will link it to the webpage as well. Just more access for the community, more than anything else.
Talk about that, I hate to put you on the spot. Can you go back there for a second? Cuz I was thinking of Michael, so the, I said Google Calendar, will he be able to? So one of the, one of the communication pieces that he and I struggle with is as meetings change and they come and go, you know, we got meetings scheduled, something happens, one gets canceled, you know, I have to do A, B, and C to make sure it comes down, and one of them is reminding him. Can people sign up? When you clicked on one of those meetings again, "Read More," it said, oh, go down, I saw it say Google Calendar, so.
So this just, all this does is put an entry on your Google Calendar, I believe?
So will he be notified if I make a change of a planning board meeting?
I don't know, I can check that.
Okay, cuz he would like that, I think, so that we don't have to.
At bare minimum, when I update something here, I can send APAT a link, or I can send him some information and kinda take that off of your plate, if that's how we're gonna handle it.
Yeah, I just didn't know if that, I saw the Google Calendar, I know that's what he uses, if it ties together.
I think all that does is put an entry into your Google Calendar.
Oh, okay.
Or your Outlook calendar or what have you.
Okay, gotcha.
Back to the homepage, so I showed you that. All of these guys here are just more links, so if we can come here and click on Public Hearings, this should bring us to a public hearing notice. That one happens to be tomorrow, I think, for a solar array on Milton Mills Road.
15th, yeah.
Toot-to-do, I'm almost done wasting time.
Now, we talked about the calendar, I mean, the newsletter, that was one thing that Tom called in about today.
So the newsletter is a possibility. We will have to go with a third-party newsletter, but they can sign up here. And we can manage the mailing list here. And then we'd use MailChimp or another newsletter service to actually handle, create, and send out that newsletter.
So basically, what we're thinking is that we'll have a staff member maintain a list every week of, you know, things going on, maybe, you know, events or whatever, meetings, whatever, rabies clinics. And if you sign up on the website with your email address, every Friday, a newsletter will get mailed out to you, to anybody that's signed up for it.
That would be anything you want on it, events in town, town meeting results, election results, anything, really. So scrolling down further on the homepage, I have this click here for Municipal Directory. All this is gonna do is pull up that PDF you created that has all the contact information, hours, what have you. This big blue box is gonna be our message area like we have on the homepage today. Relatively easy to maintain, so you can see the ones that I've put in here. More calendar information. Then as we scroll even further down, we can see the Town Hall hours, the transfer station hours. So quick links, a lot of these were put here by our vendor, but it is fully customizable. We can put whatever we want in any of these areas.
All right, so the million-dollar question, when do we think that we'll have training and consider going live?
I actually have a meeting with our vendor, I believe, on Friday to discuss that. We still need to work out the email.
Oh, yes.
I will need a list of all of the emails that we currently have.
But this can go live before we deal with the email, cuz we're not dealing with the email till after town meeting?
Because that's a whole nother record out on the internet to handle where the email points to, so. The only catch is, is we can't turn off the existing stuff until we have it all ported to the new provider.
Right, and we have the same URL, right?
It will be the same URL when we're done, yes. Questions, comments, suggestions, concerns?
This looks great. This is, it just.
And we talked, I'm sorry, we talked about maybe letting residents submit pictures to the administrator for, you know what I mean, for the top piece there?
Yep, so one of the things Jennifer and I discussed was asking the communities to submit pictures for consideration to be put up on this scrolling banner we have here.
That would be nice.
Give, I think it would give the community some kind of ownership in the webpage if they see their picture up there. They're more likely to go click and check it out, you know?
So we still have a lot to transfer over, but.
Yes. I do have all of the PDFs copied down that were uploaded, some of them dating back to 2013, I think is the oldest one I saw. I have those archived, if you need a copy of them, I'm more than happy to provide a copy for you on a USB stick or something.
But we're putting, like, so I think I have the tax bills on the old website, I have the tax bills going back to '06, Selectmen minutes back to '06, that'll all still carry over, right?
Yes, so I have to think about where I put that now. I know I put it in here, I just don't remember where.
That's okay.
Town meetings and elections, so this is one of the things I wanted to show you. So here's the results for 2023. We can click here and look at all the results from 2022, so you don't need to parse through a huge list to find what you're looking for.
Oh, nice, each year will be on there? So where would like 2021 box be?
So when I get it created, the 2021 box will be right here next to 2022.
And then it'll just keep going to the right?
As we roll into each new year, all of these would slide one spot, and the most current year will be on this page.
I like how you have the recording right beside the minutes, you see that down there?
Yes. So again, we can click here, this would bring us right to the YouTube for that special town meeting.
All right, good evening, everyone. It's 6 o'clock, and we're gonna begin.
That actually sounds pretty good.
Yeah.
This looks really user-friendly.
Yes. You know, I can't remember where I uploaded those files to, but I, maybe I didn't upload them yet, but I know they're there.
Yep, okay. And we're still working on cleaning them up. We're finding a few sporadic things that can come off, but we're working on it.
So long story short, there's a lot of work done, there's a lot left to do. Jennifer and I are gonna have to work together to figure out exactly what we wanna carry over from the old site to the new, as far as all the old documents and things like that. Once we go live, then I anticipate opening it up to all the various committees. We can give them access to it, I think, and we may be able to lock them down to just their page if we want. And if not, they can just go through me if that's what we have to do.
Yeah, yeah, and we're gonna talk about that more after town meeting, so.
Okay. That was it, that's all I wanted to show you guys.
Nice job.
You can see the progress.
Appreciate it, Dan.
Thank you.
Can you hit the light? Oh, thanks, Ryan.
There we go, thanks, Ryan. Okay, where are we here, new website? Okay, we're down to new business here, APAT, can anyone say, I think we've already gone over that. So propane contract.
So last week, I asked you guys if you wanted to go out to bid without telling you what the rate was, and you decided not to. So Down East Energy has offered a firm price of $1.74, which is down from $1.96 last year, so 24 cents. So hoping that you will look to sign this contract.
All right, oh, you got it right here. Is it here? All right, so we wanna make a motion to accept the Down East Energy, sorry, supply contract. And the annual consumption is approximately 8,000 gallons, and the price is gonna be $1.74 per gallon. Yeah, yeah, $1.74, nine zero, per gallon. So this is a commitment for 8,000 gallons?
I'll second that.
All right.
All in favor? Okay.
Lost tonight. I'm sorry, one of the residents, Michael? One of the residents has sent me an email saying there's no sound on the live feed, just a picture.
Did I see the price come down?
I know, it's a good 20 cents. That doesn't happen a lot. Summer events.
Okay, we're down to Iron Tales, summer events.
All right, so Greg is here, I believe, and in your package you have a letter from him, we'll let him go over.
Evening, folks. Yeah, I just wanted to submit requests for some outdoor music events that, you know, generally take place after 5:00 PM. Mass gathering for primarily the 17th of June, which is usually my biggest day of the season. And just in the name of being a good neighbor, I just want, you know, I want to bring this information forward to the public and let them know on, you know, which evenings I would be having music outdoors after 5:00 PM. I have considered in the past, and I don't know if it's a good idea or not, about putting it on the local social media, on the What's Up in Acton, just to let folks know what's going on, but I, I don't know if it's a good idea, and I don't know if I feel guilty about that, you know, I'm not trying to advertise my business, or am I trying to advertise my business, or am I trying to let folks know, hey, we got an outdoor music event? But I do adjust the hours, my shows indoors usually go to 11:00, and I have these outdoor events end at 10:00 PM. So I'm required by the Planning Board, they ask that I come before this board for any music events that are scheduled after 5:00 PM. And I try to keep, I try to limit that. All the bands that perform at Iron Tales, they all like to play outside at night, you know, on the big stage, but, you know, in the name of being a somewhat a good neighbor and reasonable, I try to limit, you know, the shows to, you know, a few a month. And let's see, all these are, the dates before you are confirmed events. I have one that is unconfirmed, potentially gonna be confirmed tomorrow. And I also have another event that I neglected, and it's on the 22nd of July. It's a fundraiser called State for Life. It's a fundraiser for suicide prevention, and I expect a significant turnout for that. The folks that are putting it together have just done an outstanding job blowing it up, and I think it's gonna be, it involves Jeeps and motorcycles, music, and whatnot.
Good. So what are you looking, what are you looking out of us?
I'm just supposed to come, according to the Planning Board, I'm supposed to come before here. You know, the mass gathering permit, I mean, I could fill all those out, it's kinda duplicate, and, you know, I meet all the criteria generally on a regular basis, you know, as far as what the requirements are on that.
What did we make you do last year? Last year, I thought we grouped everything together.
Yes.
In one.
Yeah, similar to this, similar to this, I had a bunch of listed dates, and I filled out, I think it was, you know, eight or 10 mass gathering permits, but they're kinda repetitive, so.
Then we had you come back for the public hearing, right?
Well, there's no public hearing on mass gatherings, it's generally just a check of the Sheriff's Department and a check of, you know, just to see if they have concerns, we don't do public hearings on mass gatherings.
Yeah, okay.
But we didn't actually fill out a mass gathering or pay the fee or provide the insurance, or so we're clear if we're comparing it to other mass gatherings.
Okay.
Not that we don't have time to do that, but, or you don't even.
In my.
In your opinion, what exactly did the Planning Board instruct you to do in regards to these events? That's a kind of a gray area.
Well, it was my understanding that if I'm doing a music event, you know, obviously, you know, the main concern is noise after hours. I generally do operate within the confines of the noise ordinance. I know at the residential line, it's 50 dB, I think it's at 10:00 PM, that it goes down to 50 from 60, then on the commercial, on the commercial borders, it's 60 dB from 10:00 PM. And I do use, as a matter of fact, I used my decibel meter, I bought two identical ones just to make sure, you know, cuz I certainly don't have them calibrated, but it's something I was able to purchase, and I use those to, you know, be certain that I'm within the ordinance. So.
And anything like this wasn't part of your, when you went to the Planning Board, it's not part of, they just told you to come to us, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
See, they shouldn't be doing that. They shouldn't be dictating what we do. I mean, they come to you, they're supposed to give you a, this is what you're allowed to do, is what you're not allowed to do.
Addition, right.
And I read it, it, it was kind of a gray area. It's like, okay, well, this is what we want you to do, but if you go over this and just go see the selectmen and get their blessing, which I've never heard of before, because we, we don't, there's a whole reason why the planning board does what they do with their conditional use permit. We don't have anything to do with that.
Is there, is there, there's probably on record some minutes for that.
Yeah, we read that. We review them. Can they say exactly what you said?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so maybe I, maybe I misinterpreted.
No, no, they say exactly that.
No.
So it's something to, maybe, like we were talking about after the summer, you know, maybe in the fall, let's, you know, try to get together and with...
Yeah, he shouldn't have to come to us.
Right, is what we're saying. This should be already in your, right.
Either it falls in your conditions or it doesn't. I mean, right.
Yeah, I, I, this is, this is the same stuff I've been doing for many years, but, you know, in the past, it was, I, I think, you know, noise complaints from two different residents over the, you know, culmination of years. And, you know, they, and I respect the fact they had to, you know, address it. And I certainly, like I said, I try to be a good neighbor, although I, I'm not blind to motorcycle noise and, and music from, yeah, music noise. But there's other events in town not too far from where I operate, you know, similar situation, it's just not a, not on a consistent basis, however, it is becoming more frequent, you know, which is a good thing, you know, in my opinion. I'm talking about the fairgrounds. I, you know...
And with this, this mass gathering, you, last year, you had it set up so that there was like traffic control.
Yeah, that was, that was for the, that was for the Creed Fisher concert that I, I rented the fairgrounds across the street, and I did hire two of the, two deputies for traffic safety, folks crossing back and forth across 109. And it was, it was the best thing I ever did. And, and I would, you know, if I have an event of that caliber again, which is potential on the, on the 27th of July, I would do the, do the same thing.
So you were able to hire the sheriff's department to do that?
Yeah, to pay them to work on, you know, outside of that, you know, and I understand they have, they're, they're limited, you know, they're not private security for me or anything, but I'll tell you.
The reason why we're asking is there, we have something else down the line here.
Nothing to do with you, but, yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah. You can hire, you can hire a traffic detail, and to be quite honest, it was the best thing I ever did, because as many folks were there at the show, it was a very successful and peaceful evening. And I just think, and that, I love to see the sheriff's department park across, at the fairgrounds anyway. My customers may not like it, but I sure do, because, you know, it encourages them to think twice, you know? But, you know, obviously, they, they can't set up there all the time, but I certainly love it when they do.
So for the sake of, of tonight, can we have them complete one mass gathering application, put all these on there, follow the process that we would, and put them back on next week's agenda because...
Same thing we did last year.
Yeah, that's what we had, how we ended it last year, all as one. We need Tom here, which we didn't know when we put you on the agenda, because Kim obviously has to stay.
Yep, I have to refer, yep.
So we'll fill out the paperwork, and we'll get you back on for next Wednesday and do...
So I'll submit one and list the dates?
One, yep.
Okay.
List the dates and what the event is, bang, bang, bang.
Sure.
The time.
Okay, very good.
And we'll see you next, next Wednesday?
Thank you, next Wednesday.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
We just found out he was gonna be out, or we would've addressed it tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to town credit card.
Okay, so as Tom has been reviewing a lot of our different finances and looking at things to assist us, we have a debit card policy right now that essentially says that, you know, departments can order things on debit cards, and there's a process, you know what I mean? We keep no money in the debit card account, a minimal amount. They have to come in, they, you know, they fill out a form, we request that it gets transferred, we transfer, we move it back, it hits the GL account. The auditor spoke to Tom about making it cleaner and the excess amount of work, so they recommend doing away with the debit cards and just doing a credit card with X amount of limit that's gonna be paid off every month anyway. So we're just starting to look at that. That's just a packet that I asked you to look over, and we'll address it next week, once you've had time to look at it. There are three different credit card companies in there, including our local bank. So, just informational for tonight.
Okay.
Okay, rec parking lot estimate.
So as I understand it, and Will may be able to help answer some of this, he's been communicating, or the rec director reached out to him to ask him to do some ditching. Can you explain exactly what that's all about, Will?
Uh, yeah, the rec director called me up like a week ago and asked me, I ditched the parking lot in 2019, but at the time, I couldn't, like, the ditch is supposed to go into that retention pond that's out there, and all the trees were growing up and everything, so I wasn't able to finish it, and I never got the okay to finish it. So we're pretty much just finishing what we didn't do before, and we just gotta clean up the ditch that's there now. So like, and then she wants me to just like grade the parking lot up a little bit, I guess.
Oh, you got the, you got the estimate?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, you both should have it, I'm sorry.
I probably do, it's probably...
And you took a look to your right.
Probably in that part.
No, I already looked through here. Oh, there it is.
I was gonna say.
Oh, boy. I got two.
One of the projects.
That's the other one. Okay. Now, we have an engineer going, let's come up and take a look at...
Right, yeah.
How did that, how did, where did that, where did we leave that with the engineer? What are they waiting for? Are they gonna get a number to you?
Yes, yep. And I mean, how do, I mean, we didn't direct him to go over to the other parking lot and check out the ditching or any of that. I mean, we're, we're looking on the new parking lot, and, you know...
Yeah, this was in the old part.
Yeah, this is, yeah, that's, this isn't the new one, right. So...
They have the funds for this, correct?
That's what I was, yep. They do. All right.
It's maintenance, but no issue with it.
Yep, so.
Okay.
Make a motion, or we just...
Motion to approve?
We should do approve that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the estimate for the ditching in the parking lot of the rec.
Two thousand seven hundred twenty-one thirty-four. I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Yes. Can you just initial one copy for me, and I'll take it back? Please, and thank you.
Nope, that's what I'll do right here.
Yeah, I've written on mine.
People's blood everywhere is. Okay, what's the next? I would say the hydrant. Stay right there.
So I put these numbers together for the fire chief, replace that dry hydrant down there at the, at the tennis court. So that's to replace the hydrant that's there, dig it, put the new one in, and then we're gonna put in like a little parking area there, so the fire trucks, there is a fire, they can kind of get off and be out of the road, and they get to the hydrant a little bit closer, because right now, you can't really get as close as you need to get.
I talked to Wayne. He said that he talked to the people at church, and they're allowing that, correct?
Yep, yep.
Because it's on their property?
Yeah, and I know the, the pipes all ordered and everything, and then the company that we're getting the pipe from, we're gonna fuse it all together when they come and everything, and, so yeah, you guys are all set with it. We'll probably do it right off.
This is coming out of the fire.
Yeah, so in this, and I think that, you know, you've been talking to...
This is over 5,000.
Well, it, it, it's gotta be done in this year's budget.
Yeah, we're gonna do it right, right off, if you guys approve it, so...
Based on policy, it's exempt. How you've changed your policy.
All right, that's what I was wondering.
Did that make this work better, more, flow better, I guess?
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we accept the estimate from David Langley and Sons Escavating for the dry hydrant installation on the San Pedro in the amount of $5,188.44.
I'll second that. In favor?
Okay, yeah, I can sign this one.
Thank you, Will. Okay, where are we now?
West Shore.
West Shore Drive bids.
All right, so for the last several, several months, we've been working on this. About five minutes before, we got our first and only bid.
Once we got...
I had already been making calls, saying, what if, what if, what if? They don't let me have a knife.
Got my gold clip this.
So obviously, we're gonna do some extensive reading on this. I'm gonna get to the bottom line number, just for the record of reading it. He's got a lot of exhibits in here that I won't embarrass myself by explaining. Price is $311,000. And this is from, I'm sorry, Curtis Earthworks. So I will photocopy this, I'll get it to all three board members, and we'll put it on next week's agenda to discuss our next step.
Okay.
Drop it off, Ray. Be in touch.
I'll be in touch.
How much do we got?
Liquor license permit.
Did we miss the mass gathering?
Mass gathering.
Oh, I'm sorry. Marked it off already. Mass gathering permit.
All right, so this is a mass gathering permit for the Renaissance Fair. I will remind the board that we got an extensive amount of calls last year regarding parking and traffic. I don't know that you have any, a whole lot of issue, a whole lot of remedy solutions, short of, I noticed one of you asked about the traffic detail. The event, the event is in July. I think one of you have the, it should be in your pile. David, you've got the master?
I've got it, I believe, right here, yep. It is July 22nd, 23rd, and 29th and 30th.
That was two full weekends.
So two weekends.
Okay, so...
Last year, too.
Yeah. What do you want to do?
I really would like them to have traffic detail, because it was insane. I worked both those weekends, and, I mean, you could not, I mean, it's worse than the fair. They really...
I would like to have them at least come in, because we talked about this last year...
Can they come in and talk with us?
About at least coming up with some sort of idea or some sort of plan, how they're gonna divert traffic, or even have some sort of flaggers or something there, you know, or like Greg did, you know, hire a couple of sheriffs or something, because, I mean, I think the traffic was all the way down.
Well, and, right, and it's taking away from the, I mean, a deputy from the sheriff's department, you know, that could be elsewhere.
Well, I mean, there's companies they can call. I just like to, before we sign off on this, I like to have, see if they have some sort of idea of how they can make it better than what it was.
Right, so I'll ask them to come in for next week and give them, get some ideas. Can I just get that original back from you? Do you want to put the liquor...
We did have a lot of complaints, lots of complaints.
The liquor license, on the next item is the Bubbles To Go, and this is tied to that same event, so they would be the main Renaissance Fair. They're estimating 1,500, 1,500 people a day, two buildings fenced in with no alcohol past this point, signs posted. So that's what the liquor license application is for.
Okay.
I mean, we could, we could grant the liquor license.
Can we do that? I mean, okay, sure.
I, I can see why not.
Yeah, I would think that. And that's gonna go through the state, so I'd probably appreciate...
So Bubbles To Go is what it's called?
Bubbles To Go.
Bubbles To Go Mobile. I guess they bring the bubbles to the Renaissance Fair.
Yeah, it's the same company.
So...
And they didn't have, when I talked to the sheriff's department, there were no concerns with those types of issues.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we accept Bubbles To Go Incorporated liquor license. Number of people's attending estimates about 15,000 per day for four days.
1,500.
Oh, 1,500, yeah, 15,000, that would be horrible.
15,000.
Ah, we'd have a real, real trouble.
I'll make a motion. I'll second the motion, I mean.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
You'll second it? So all in favor?
Favor.
Okay.
It's been a while since I've had a chair.
We're off tonight.
A little rusty.
I know. Excuse me. All right, so, there you go. Just need to... It's got a liquor license. Excuse me.
Okay, we're gonna send that right over, so we don't lose it.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go down to planning board resignation.
So the court officer received an email from Chelsea Kenyon, who says unfortunately, she's gonna be traveling quite a bit over the next few months, and is not gonna be able to commit to the planning board as she had hoped. So she's going to resign her position for alternate at this time.
Okay, so it looks like we're...
All right. And a motion to accept, initial that for me, and we'll get an alternate position advertised.
Regretfully, we accept the resignation of Chelsea Kenyon as one of our planning board alternates, right?
All in favor?
Of course. Do we need to...
Sign anything?
No, no.
Yeah, I can just, I can add it, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Public comment. Ray, it's all yours.
Good evening. Thought I'd like to thank you for putting on the candidate tonight. My wife set up the event as a private citizen. We did receive a couple of phone calls with complaints, and we understand it's human error. We don't see anyone was at fault. We thank all the people that attended, that were able to get the full picture of what was happening, and we'd like to thank everybody that made that possible. A couple of things here. On the town credit card, is this amount that's gonna be on the credit card part of the department's budget?
Yes, absolutely. So the idea is, let's just say we have a $2,000 limit on the credit card. They'll still have to fill out an authorization form, so we'll still be the sole holder of the card. The transportation, you know, superintendent will come to me, and he'll say, I need to go to Lowe's, purchase A, B, and C. We can allow the card to have a spending limit of up to just that amount. He'll go down, he'll purchase it, he'll bring the card back, the receipt, and it'll be, the entry will be hit against his account.
Okay, thank you. On the liquor license for the Renaissance Fair, the Bubbles To Go, I guess the question is on liability, the insurance. I'm sure that they're...
They provide their own.
Yes.
Provide their own insurance.
We do have a copy of that.
Okay. On the Iron Tail events, recently, they had a pretty good accident that happened on 109. Don't know the liability on that aspect of it. I don't know if they have a, if there's a law in Maine that, you know, if someone seems, or you've seen X amount of drinks or something, you stop serving them or something like that.
We don't, we don't know anything that's going on. Obviously, if something like that came about...
If it came about, it would fall on the business owner.
Yeah, we'd know. So that's, I mean, the state of Maine issues a liquor license, and they would notify the town as the first municipal officer's signed, and that's only after an investigation by the sheriff's department, and that information would come to the town. But we have never been notified, or we warranted the last accident, that, you know, accident A, B, or C happened because somebody left any establishment in town. So a lot of rumors fly, that fly, but until somebody with some authority notifies us that that's the reason and that we need to be concerned, it's not an area that we get involved in.
And the last thing you would be worried about is a mass gathering permit at that point, Doc, because the state would pull their license.
Right, yeah. They, they have a lot more pulled than us, and they're, they're overseeing it.
And last but not least, on your new website, everything looks pretty good. I'm sure it's gonna be a learning curve for everyone scrolling through everything that's there. My question on the calendar side of things is, are people gonna be able to submit? Like, let's say we wanna schedule the town hall for this. I didn't see anything discussed for that.
They'll still need to contact the town administrator's office. I mean, we're still a small office. They can call us to see if it's available, because we don't put things on the calendar that aren't town events. So, you know, we may allow the Republicans to use it, or the birthday party for the grandchild, but that's not something that would show up on the calendar, so you can't go by that with the hall being available just based on that calendar, because we do allow...
No, but I was, I was just wondering as far as, like, let's say, for example, if there was some birthday party or whatever was on there, and that time schedule we wanted, and somebody else wanted that slot.
Right.
So it's not gonna show up?
No, we're not gonna put private events on there.
So that'll be something that will be totally handled by...
We're not that big of a town. Yeah, absolutely. They can still call in.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks a lot. Any more public comment?
Hi, Bernard Broder. I, like Ray, I just wanted to run down a couple of things. One was the website, that I'm wondering if before that, maybe before it launches, or if after it launches, if there'll be an opportunity to make changes to it. Because, you know, to make sure that it's user-friendly, to get feedback from the citizens that are gonna be using it. You know, what came to my mind immediately tonight was some of the visually, for anyone that's visually impaired, which I am, like that banner at the top that's announcing the town meeting is in kind of an orange color, and it's a fall scene. So just things like that, that I think, you know, if you let people have some input, rather than listening to us complain after the fact, might be a good idea. The West Shore Drive bid, Jennifer, you indicated you'd make copies for the select board. I'm wondering, is it... I'm wondering, is it possible for it to be posted or for citizens to get copies so that we too could be prepared next week?
I don't think we want to do that, Ray. The problem is, we gotta go through the bid.
Yep.
Go through it when Tom comes back.
Right.
We're going to go through it. If for some reason we decide that something that we don't like, I wouldn't want to put it on the website, because if, say, we put it back out the bid, then they're going to be able to look through this whole bid package. I just, I don't believe it.
Other companies will be able to...
Until we make a decision whether or not we're going to go with it or not.
If they accept it, if they accepted it, I mean...
If they accept it, yeah, we'll put it right out.
Yes, yeah, once we accept.
But I mean, what if, or can it be available by hard copy? The only, where I'm going with this is, if you accept it without us being able to say, hey, did you think of this, or did you see that, then it's too late. And I think the more eyes that look at something, the better.
I'm just wondering.
And I understand what you're saying.
If you do decide to put it back out, it wouldn't look very professional for us to post somebody's bid online and then say, then go, okay, we're not going to take your bid, but people bid, they'll see everything you put down.
Are you talking about the specs or the...
Spec.
Because the amount was already disclosed tonight.
The amount is, okay, but it's how it's written out.
Okay. Well, you know, obviously I'll defer to what you're saying, but I just want to put that out.
And just to kind of protect David a little bit, I mean, it, it is a public document, so we're not going to refuse it if somebody asks for a copy of it, but the board is just asking for a week to look at it amongst themselves. But if somebody comes in and makes a request, I mean, we'll follow the law, but we're politely requesting for a week for the board to look at it.
Yep, yep. And I appreciate the concern and attention to traffic control with various events, and I, I think there's a balance to be struck. You know, none of the events have been mentioned. Do I find objectionable, or do I think we should consider not having? I think they're good for the town, and they bring business in and so forth, but we just have to make sure that we ensure safety and ideally convenience as much as possible, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernard.
Okay, anybody else?
Evening. Ken Allen. I was contacted by Jen earlier today on regards of saving the Lincoln School, I guess, or coming up with a board.
Well, let's back up a little, because I, so, as I understand it, Mr. Neal contacted Tom McGurty, and they had a conversation about him possibly being on the agenda. I was in an appointment this morning when I came in, a call came in from Mr. Neal, as I understand it, asking why he wasn't on the agenda. At the same time, a resident was here that was working with it, and her, she had no idea about anything that was going on, and she deferred to Ken, so that's why we called. So I just want to make it clear that I didn't...
No, 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 no.
This was a call, we, they were expected to be on the agenda, or Mr. Neal was expected to be on the agenda.
Right.
So tell them how you're tied to this first, how they, so bring the residents into, how you're tied to the Lincoln School and Mr. Neal, and how this is all...
Well, I, I deal with Mr. Neal a lot on, a lot of volunteer work. He comes in our cemeteries when we do our historical society.
So are you on the historical society, the Acton Shapley Historical Society?
I'm not on it, but I do, I'm there all the time, but I am on the cemetery committee board.
Yeah, that I do, thank you for that.
Correct. So he does the Margaret Chase, uh, no, Margaret, uh...
Mary Grant.
Mary Grant. He's on all of these, and I, I know this saving the Lincoln School, it means a lot to him.
Okay, and I thought you were on, and I'm sorry, I misled the board. My understanding from the conversation with Mr. Neal was that two residents were speaking, not that you're not worthy, don't take it that way, but members of the Acton Shapley Historical that wanted to save the Lincoln School were coming to speak, so just for clarity, I apologize for telling you that. Okay, go ahead.
So I guess I, we need some guidance, because talking to Mr. Neal, I guess we have four strong people who are interested in getting together and...
So maybe we should hear from Dick, it sounds like he's the one kind of spearheading.
Well, we probably ought to hear from the four individuals who want to do it.
Correct.
Everybody.
So these are, are these members of a committee, or they're just four people, residents?
Four residents.
Four residents, okay.
Or three residents and, yes.
Well...
Why don't we get together and then...
What do you want to, what are they wanting to do? What is the project?
Well, the project is, is we want to be able to go in and clean back the vegetation that's, you know, coming into the back of the building and, you know, gives more airflow around it and...
Siding, you said, right?
Correct. The siding will need to be painted, but, you know, no inspection has been done by myself or whoever or whatnot, and we'd like the opportunity to look inside and outside and come up with a plan and see if the four of us can tackle this and if we need more support or not.
So as a town, so we would have them fill out the town volunteer forms rather than not, okay? We originally thought it was the committee taking it.
So why don't we do this, why don't you get the four individuals that you, who intend, want to work on the building?
Right.
See if we can get our handyman to meet him over there one day to open up the door, go through it, and then come to us with a plan of what you want to do?
Perfect.
And, and then...
Well, I'm going to ask, Mr. Neal, do you have a key to that building?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Which you probably should turn over to the town, and the town would...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll schedule that with Robin.
I think we can have our handyman bring...
We can get, get him the key and let it be his copy.
Yeah, and then make up a, a plan of what you want, you guys want to do, obviously. We're going to sign the waiver there to make sure we have all responsibilities and all that.
Would you open it up to other residents?
Yes.
Would you open it up to other residents if it's not a committee?
Yeah.
Maybe there were other people that might be interested in helping?
If we do that, then, we, I don't think we want to just have Robin over there, one of us probably should be there.
Well, no, I didn't mean that, Dave, but just like making a small...
Let them make, let them make their plan up first, before we get this blown up too hard.
Right.
Let them do their plan.
Yeah, let's see what needs to be done.
Come to us, and then if you guys decide you want more help or whatever...
We can maybe rally some troops.
We'll figure it out from there, but I think that's probably the, probably the way to go right now.
All right.
Okay. So we'll get something scheduled.
Thank you for your guidance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good start.
Joseph Rumah. And I just want to say one thing about the school. In years past, I was under the impression, perhaps I was wrong, that Mr. Neal was in charge of renovating or fixing up the school, and we donated $2,000, I think for two years.
We did in the past, didn't we?
For that purpose, and, and since that time, nothing's been done.
I think, Mr. Rumah, we could go back and watch the tapes, but I think that the talk during the budget season was that the Acton Shapley Historical Society, part of the fund that they were requesting, was to help build up that, and, and maybe Mr. Neal can add to that. So if the Acton Shapley Historical Society didn't use those funds for, as I understood, it was one of the things they wanted to do, it wasn't earmarked for that, then we would have to talk to them about it.
Well, I was under the impression it was earmarked, because it was from...
Do you know, Dick, if that was the case? Was it specifically earmarked for that?
I didn't know.
No, it wasn't.
I don't think so.
It was not.
It's just the historical society is asking for...
Oh, there's a lot of work that's been done over the years, all of Treadwell, in her group. We donated like $500 for that, and it was kind of a community project.
Yeah, no, and it's...
And people donated their time.
Yep, and I'm sure they would.
Yeah, that would be nice.
You know, and, and it's an important building, so I think it should be clarified, if these four people, what, what they're going to be doing as far as, are they on a committee? You have a lot of people, a lot of chiefs in this town, but you have very few Indians. What are they going to be doing, where, who's providing the money, who's providing the time?
Well, that's why we asked them to make a plan up.
No, I heard you.
They want to do it.
No, I just want to make, I'm just clarifying, David, yeah.
And we'll, we'll follow up with, let me look at a couple of minutes, because the town meeting minutes.
Well, I think it'd be scrutinizing. We gave them $2,000, I think for two years, it's $4,000.
Well, I think there was discussion about it going towards that.
We, we, the money, I remember the one year we did not give to the Acton...
Historical.
Historicals. Acton Shapley at all. I remember that. Then the next year, there was money put forward, I can't remember the exact amount, but it was put towards, to the Acton Shapley Historicals.
I know, I did.
It was not one individual.
We gave it to the Red Cross too. I mean, we give a lot of money out. The thing is, if we're specifically doing, setting a project, we should be following through with it.
They didn't, they, they never gave us a specific project.
Okay.
It was mentioned like other things.
Well, it was mentioned.
They added it into one of the things that they were talking about.
Yeah.
So let's follow through, let's reach out to them and ask them what their intentions are, and see if they have any intent on assisting with that. David's right. We'll see where we stand.
What I'd like to ask the selectmen or the town administrator, why did they change having the election after the town meeting?
That was, it was changed this year, I can tell you why the board changed it, I didn't change it.
I can answer that.
Town Father's, Father's Day weekend, wasn't it?
Well, the issue we're having was everybody was complaining about Father's Day weekend.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we went down through the, the timeline of how long this was going to take before everything was voted in, you know, meaning the warrant, articles, the warrant, finance, and everything else, and, and I believe I was the one who came up with the idea of doing it the week before.
Yeah, we always, the election part of it, Joe, always has to be the second Tuesday of the month, just in case the state has a referendum. We don't know until Marchish.
Okay, so that's, that's a fix.
So that's the fix, second Tuesday of the month.
Then you'd have the...
The one before or one after?
Right.
And la, and they got a little, a lot of slack for having it on Father's Day weekend, so the alternative is the one before.
So it was the Father's Day type of thing, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I just want to make one suggestion, I think that in the future, starting with 2024, January 1st, if the town, selectmen, whoever makes these budgets, set up a skeleton budget, and it's, be fairly simple in most of these things, like the school does, so that they can start their budget process, so like in January, February, they have a good idea, so that when they can present their budget and warrants to the warrant and finance, the people on the warrant and finance have enough time to scrutinize these funds. You know, there's hundreds and thousands of dollars worth of money. This year, this process was not only rushed, it was, I felt it was just like, somebody's just stuffed some papers in front of you, and it should have allowed us to take more time. You know, and you, you don't have to agree with us.
Well, I also feel that, you know, we didn't have all the information until kind of the last minute, because of the order too.
If you're going to be, do the job, do it right. Spend the time, be a selectman or don't do it.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I feel that we're doing our job right. We, we give you guys all the information that we have.
Right.
I don't believe we denied you any information.
Well, it's, David, it's not that you're doing a good job.
Oh, no, I know.
It's not that you're doing a bad job, it's just not, you're not spending the time to do the job. It's, it's a lot of responsibility.
When you say that, I, what do you mean, I'm not spending enough time? Do you have any idea how many hours a week I put into this job? It's not just showing up on Wednesday night and saying, how you doing, guys? I spend hours and hours and hours.
In your mind, you do, but let's see...
No, 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 I do, and honestly, at the end of the day, Joe, I've gone to your finance committee meetings, three hours of listening to mumbo jumbo and the same...
It's not mumbo jumbo, it's educated people that know how to manage money.
No, no, Joe, you just got to be and said, we're not doing our job. We're doing our job. And if I wasn't doing my job, excuse me, Joe, excuse me, Joe. I know during the finance committee meetings, you're allowed to yell out whatever you want, but not here, okay? We do what we think we have to do. We never, the, the other night at Candidates Night, I know that was a big thing about how we were so mean to the finance committee, okay? I invite anybody to get and watch some of those, those committee meetings, because believe me, if anyone would have been doctored, we would have doctored those. Watch them and understand why we are in the position we're in, okay? We put forward what we think we need, we expect you to scrutinize, was I think the word you used.
We didn't have enough time, David.
And, and we've given you every opportunity now, and yes, whether or not we wanted you guys to bring in all the departments, I'm going to sit through a three-hour meeting, maybe get an answer, we were looking out for the departments, but...
But do you have, do you have the credentials, David?
No, no.
What credentials do you have?
What, what?
Credentials do you have?
Credentials?
Yeah. What credentials do you have? You have no credentials. You won a popularity contest, is what you won.
Really, Joe?
That's all you won.
How did you, how did you get on the warrant finance committee?
I asked, I asked questions.
What were your credentials?
I, I've lived in this town.
There was 24 people in town, so I think this is the guy that wants to get in.
Well, at least, at least I've done something for the town.
Then I ran again, then I ran again, and then I, and then I won again.
You ran again, yeah.
And it's not a popularity contest.
Of course it is, David.
Well, then we got to change up the system, Joe.
We should.
Now, how should we do that? Should I, do I need a degree at Harvard to be, do this stuff?
No, no, maybe you should take a course in how to be a selectman.
I've done the courses, okay.
Remain, uh, municipal. Maybe you should do that, how, you ever think about that?
I've done that.
This is a farm in town, David. I knew your grandfather.
Well, I, I know that.
Your grandfather was, was poor and honest.
Yeah.
And, and he was, people respected him.
Yeah. I don't believe I probably ever had the respect my grandfather did, because he was a good dude, okay?
Yeah, he was a good dude.
Didn't know him as well as I should have, could have. Why am I, we're talking about my grandfather right now, because honestly, Joe, you're way out of line here, dude.
Oh, you think so, yeah.
You're way out of line, dude, so why don't you go sit down, please?
Yeah, David, there's a lot of good credentials, you know, Dave, but you're not one of them.
I know, Joe.
You can't fool me.
Go sit down.
Hey.
And I'm not looking for your vote next time, sir.
I don't care. Stay on your own side of town, you know?
Because the popularity contest, you've told me that before. You also threatened to burn my house down, so.
All right, enough, enough.
Sit down, Joe.
Come on, let's move this along, both of you.
Go look at the road bridge, yeah. Go look at the copper road.
We've got two bridges done already since I've been selectman, that, woo-hoo! So, uh, sit down, please.
Okay.
Okay, after that, um, that clown show.
Um, actually, I want to say something. Um, I, uh, obviously, you know, I wasn't at candidates' night. I did have surgery that day. That's why I was not there. Um, you know, if anybody has any questions or concerns, they can always get ahold of me. But I blew my meniscus out, and there was no way I was coming that night.
Two days before the surgery, was it? I'm not chuckling, but the story is kind of funny that. I'm not trying to chuckle.
You know, I didn't.
But the dogs took you out, dogs?
Yeah, my dogs took me out. Um, my dog.
Dog.
But, ah, when, and I appreciate that you, you put on these, I mean, I appreciate you setting it all up. I wish I had known when you were gonna do it, I guess, or I would have tried to put that surgery, you know, I didn't get the mail, my mail, I didn't get it until that Monday.
No phone call through?
No, I didn't get a phone call. I didn't know anything about it, so I just, I did want to bring that up. Um, you know, so when you guys set it up, maybe, you know, next time, would you call the candidates, you know, ahead and say? What was that?